Hey, can you guys see me all right? Can you guys see me all right, right?
Huh?
Can you see me?
Yes. So what's after 10 seconds, you just wave your hands?
Uh, Hallie will.
Yeah.
You'll snap it upside the head, right? All right, let me turn off my phone.
We're gonna check our Facebook Live feed.
Sure.
Is it good? It's with our fancy setup? They can hear that, can't they? Um, so, everybody, thank you for being here. Um, we are Facebook living. Uh, new contraption that I don't think that the last city commissioner, maybe two city commission races ago, you probably didn't have that feature. Um, so while we probably only have about 20 people here in the crowd, we are excited that the whole world of Facebook is able to watch us if they choose. Um, tonight, we're having a city commission forum in hopes of piquing students' interest in the city commission elections, uh, increasing turnout. The turnout traditionally for students, um, is not very good. It's usually below 10%. I think the rights union during the last non-presidential preference primary, um, city commission race, I think 8% of the registered voters turned out, according to Dr. Smith, uh, Dr. Dan Smith from the Political Science Department. Turnout citywide isn't too much better. It usually hovers between 10 and 15% when there's not a primary attached to the race. But to begin the evening, we have two of our candidates for District 2. Um, if you look up, you'll see that there is a map of District 2. It's that northwest part of Gainesville, uh, with the exception of a little sliver of District 3 that kind of runs north to 39th Avenue. Um, tonight, we have Ms. Cheryl Eddy and then Mr. Harvey Ward Jr. Um, in moderating, we have Hallie McKinley Lester. Uh, and we have questions that were prepared by the College Democrats, the College Republicans, and then the Graham Center Student Fellows. So without further ado, I'll allow Hallie to start with the questions and I'll allow the candidates to begin answering them. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again for coming and welcome to our city commission's candidate forum. Um, tonight will be separated into three segments according to the three districts contested in the March 14th election. There are District 2, 3, and 1 at-large district. The at-large district represents everyone in Gainesville and as you can see, these, uh, the map shows District 2 and 3. So candidates will be allowed a brief introductory statement and then 90 seconds each to answer a set of five questions submitted by students ahead of time. Finally, each open seat will end with a 10-minute portion for questions from the audience. So we will begin with District 3.
Um... District 2.
District 2, sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, District 2, um, Ms. Eddy, you may begin whenever you're ready. And Mr. Clausen, or, sorry, Mr. Ward.
Yeah, he's not here.
It's been a... Yeah, all right, so, we'll start with...
Hi, I'm Cheryl Eddy. I'm running for, um, City Commission District 2. I ran for this position in 2014 and, which I don't know how many of y'all were here back then, but... Um, and it was, it was a fun race. I ran against Todd Chase, who is the current incumbent who turns out. Um, and for various reasons, I was not able to really complete the race. Uh, but I was on the ballot and I did pretty well. So I decided to study for the next three years, which is what I have been doing. I've been studying and learning about the issues more and more because one of the things I found out when people encouraged me to run and said, "Run, run, run, run", and I thought I knew things and I didn't. There's a lot more to government than I realized, even though I thought I was a political genius or something. So anyway, I decided to run again and I've realized it's about a lot more than this issue or that issue or all the different issues. It's about people getting along and trying to work together. And we've become an us-against-them society. And that is something I am very frustrated with. It's not us against them. We all need to get to work. We all need to take our children to school or a parent to a doctor appointment or whatever we need to do, whatever our personal business is. We need to be able to get there safely, efficiently, and be able to afford to live a life. A life is important. No matter what you do in life, it's important. Remember the story about how to sweep a floor? If you're gonna be a school, um, floor sweeper, do it well? And that's what I believe. And I think that we need to come together and work together to make the city new floor.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Uh, my name is Harvey Ward. Uh, I am, uh, I've spent a lot of time on this campus. I'm a UF grad. I used to work, uh, over at Wymer Hall at WUFT for a number of years as a fundraiser over there. And, uh, my wife works next door at Dower Hall. She's Chair of Spanish and Portuguese Department here at UF. I've been here in Gainesville all my life. I'm a graduate of Eastside High School, Santa Fe College, and again, University of Florida. My wife and I are raising three little girls here. Uh, my family's been in Gainesville for a long time. This community means a lot to me. I would like to see my family able to stay here for many generations to come. How do we get that done? By making sure that Gainesville is, is a place that people want to live. I would like my children to look around when they're grown and educated and say, "Wow, why wouldn't we want to live anywhere except right here in Gainesville?" So if I want that, then I need to give something back to do that. My entire career has been built around nonprofit management and fundraising. And I've worked for many, many years in many, many nonprofits. Uh, I've chaired the Elder Care of Olajwa County and we built the Senior Center for Olajwa County over in northwest Gainesville on 34th Street the year that I was Chair. Uh, I've been on the Board of the Early Learning Coalition, of the Hippodrome Theater, many, many different things. I've put a lot of effort the last few years into Grace Marketplace and, um, I've worked a lot on the city and the county's efforts to improve the, uh, the plight of homelessness here in Gainesville. We have, because of, uh, the efforts of everyone involved there, we've been able to cut chronic homelessness in Olajwa County by 49% in about an 18-month period. That is really something to celebrate that doesn't get talked about enough. And it's important, especially when I'm talking to younger people. I want you to know that when we pay attention, when we really focus on a problem, we can make an impact as a community. So we'll talk about a lot of things tonight. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it and, uh, let's move ahead.
Thank you both so much. Uh, so we'll start with questions, um, from, that have been previously submitted. Um, so I'd like to start with asking the candidates, "What is your position on the future of alternative energy in Gainesville? Specifically forms other than biomass such as solar." Um, we'll start with Mr. Ward.
Uh, other than biomass, obviously, the, the obvious thing here in, in Florida is solar. Uh, we don't really have access to, to consistent winds that make that worthwhile uh, in the northeast and out in the Midwest, but certainly we have the opportunity for solar. What we don't have yet is the kind of battery systems that I think we're gonna need to make that a really reliable, consistent, community-wide, uh, alternative. I also am careful to, to say that I don't think that there is a solution that's going to replace fossil fuels. I think it's going to be a number of different solutions. And we've become accustomed to there being fossil fuels are how we get energy. A decade from now, two decades from now, there're gonna be lots of different ways that we, uh, that we harness energy. Solar certainly in Florida is gonna be one of them. Uh, I've been watching the last few days, uh, the Tesla SolarCity, uh, solar roof tile, uh, rollouts. That's a really fascinating technology and some great things are gonna happen there. I would like to see GRU, our community-owned utility, uh, if not subsidize, at least incentivize, uh, solar more than we have in the past few years. We had a good program. I would like to see us get back to that program.
Thank you. Eddy?
Um, solar is obviously the best choice. Um, we have the biomass right now and, and that's kind of a separate issue we could really discuss for a long time. But I remember back in the 70s when, um, First Encounters of the Third Kind of First, whatever it was, the movie came out. And there was a competition on what did you think was the biggest issue of the future? And I wrote an essay. I wrote an essay about energy, saying, "How do we power us in the future?" My dad was a rocket scientist, so maybe I had a little bit input from him. And he said, "Energy is the, you know, issue." I only got an honorable mention and obviously this has become a huge issue. But what there was and, and what I learned later as I went through life, there's many different forms of energy that we are not even tapping into. There's fusion energy. I worked for Modular Computer Systems in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, where we went to San Diego and they did fusion testing for fusion energy. There's a lot of different resources, but we are dominated by the fossil fuel industry. We need to diversify, have a diversified portfolio, and that definitely includes solar. We have to make solar energy very accessible for different communities and different incomes. Whatever we have to do to make that happen with incentives, we need to do. We have to diversify in many different ways. So that's my, my platform is diversification of energy sources.
Thank you. Uh, the next question regards the Innovation District between downtown and campus. What do you envision the future of this area to be? And how should it play into Gainesville's larger economics? We'll start with Ms. Eddy.
Um, this is something that's very sensitive because while we have the university and it's booming and it's growing and it's growing and it's growing, it also doesn't contribute to our tax structure. I know there are some buildings that will, that we're planning, but we have to make sure that we do not overprice and out the people that are living there now in their neighborhoods so they can't afford their taxes. Because when you develop like that, you raise the taxes. And my grandmother in Madisonville, Louisiana, has experienced that. Fortunately, she's passed away now. Well, I don't mean that, but she was 90... She's 96 years old. She li... almost 97, so she lived a great life. But it got to the point where she could not afford the taxes on her house because after Katrina, everybody moved her over on the other side of the lake. So as we expand, we have to be cognizant of other people, their issues, and their homes and not throw them out. Because if it was your parent or your grandparent, we wouldn't want that to happen. So yes, I think we need to partner, but we also have to grandfather in those that are living in their neighborhood and make sure they can keep their homes. So progress, yes. How we do it, we have to be very conscientious about it and make sure we don't leave anybody homeless.
Thank you.
I'm excited about Innovation Square. I'm excited about the UF Strategic Plan, which is kind of built around Innovation Square. Um, the, where Innovation Square is a few blocks east of here, there used to be a hospital, the Olajwa General Hospital. And a few years ago, UF acquired that and shut it down. And it's a great example of the positive change that can happen in a community. You had a, a hospital that nobody really knew how to, to, to run effectively because the building itself was very old and had not been, uh, kept in, in good repair. And what we've done is turned that into a magnet for, for business and for jobs, the kind of jobs that hopefully will keep some of you all right here in Gainesville after you've graduated. Um, the strategic plan, I went to most of the meetings for the UF Strategic Plan that they had, uh, in partnership with the city, uh, over a, a many-month period. It is fascinating what we're, the sorts of things we're talking about. We're looking at everything from right about here, where we are right now, all the way to just past downtown, where, pretty much where the GRU building is, doing very careful infill in that area. And we do have to be extremely careful that we don't run people out of the community. We don't want to, to make it such that the people who've been in a community like Porter's are suddenly pushed out. We want things, we want to provide jobs for those folks as well and make the community better for all of us. I could talk about the strategic plan all night long and I'd love to talk with you about it later.
Can I rebut? Uh... Is there rebuttal?
We don't have time for, we don't, we don't have the other candidate. We'll allow the 30-second rebuttal.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Olajwa General, in my opinion, was not the best decision to buy it. And, uh, all three of my children were born there. That hospital was a valuable resource. Shutting it down and the county lost a tremendous amount of money. I don't know what happened to that money, where it went, but it looks like it went into the pocket of some of the people that were in that little group. So, sorry.
Well, you missed about three or four steps in there, but that's okay.
Well, I only had 30 seconds. Pardon.
I understand, but...
I was here, my children were born there. So, anyway.
Thank you.
So was my dad. So there you go.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next question. Uh, "What can the city do to entice students to stay and contribute to businesses in Gainesville after graduation?" We'll start with Mr. Ward.
Uh, this is one of the things we can do right here, uh, engaging you with what goes on in the city. I know that, uh, students who are more active in things like, say, a political campaign, uh, and get off campus more and get into some of the northwest and northeast and southeast neighborhoods are more likely to find a, a way to become involved in the community and reasons to want to be here. Um, that's one thing that, that we can do. Again, going back to the strategic plan, providing the kind of innovative and interesting jobs that, that nor, that 10 years ago you would've had to leave Gainesville to find, um, is, is one of the big steps that we can take. I'm so thrilled to see the University of Florida partnering with the city of Gainesville for really the first time in my lifetime in a meaningful kind of way. Now, you know, we could get 10 years down the road and look back on this and realize, "Oh, well, that was a great idea, but it didn't really happen." I'm committed to making that happen because I, I think that this kind of investment by the University of Florida with the community and creating other potential partners like perhaps a, um, a land, an urban land trust and that sort of thing can create the kind of innovative job growth and more interesting places to live in the core of our city that will make people like you want to continue to be here after you graduated.
Thank you. Eddy?
Um, I'm totally into growing and incentives for people to stay here. The problem is we have to bring up the, uh, floor for wages all the way around. The jobs that pay twice as much down in South Florida or three times as much in South Florida are not going to come here suddenly, even with the university. Because most people feel like, "Oh, we got a bunch of graduating students, bachelor's degrees. We can pay them less." And even if you're, you, there's only so many engineering jobs. There's only so many cer... certain jobs in high-paying fields. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that the base is brought up. And that hasn't been done in this town. There's been an excuse. Well, I moved here and I do have a degree. Yes, it's from the other university you guys don't like so much. But, um, when I moved here back in 1989, I think, 89, 90 timeframe, um, I was offered half, less than half, actually, what I was making in South Florida. By the time I stopped working, when I retired to be with my husband, um, I was making the same amount I made when I left South Florida. So we need a whole attitude change about wages. Not only recruiting more businesses, which we have a lot of high-tech here. We need more of it. But we also need to say, "Hey, we're worth it. Pay us more." So I think there's a, a lot of things that we need to be done from the ground level up.
Thank you. Okay, uh, our next question is, uh, "What is your view on the appropriate actions for nonviolent drug offenses? Specifically, a common one that affects students and low-income residents, civil citations for marijuana possession." I'll start with Ms. Eddy.
I grew up in the 70s in South Florida. All I can say is marijuana should be legalized. Should be decriminalized, I should say. I, I think that we are wasting way too much money. I've been there when we declared the war on drugs and it's done nothing but put low-income families, low-income people, students, and everything else in jail. I think it needs to be decriminalized. Um, but right now, the citation is fine. I think that's, uh, you know, and I'm not gonna encourage my kids and I have children y'alls age and they're, they're very early 20s, just one that turned 21. So I'm not like, "Whoa, yeah, 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 go out there," you know? But I, I do think it needs to be addressed and I think we need to look at it. And we need to look at the activity that goes around criminal and I think alcohol is just as bad. So I, I'm not in favor of continuing the war on drugs. If that answers the question.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Ward?
Uh, I'm definitely in favor of civil citations. I, as long as it's legal and believe me, the, the state of Florida and the, um, the federal government are not gonna change that anytime soon, I don't think. But as long as marijuana is illegal, we, uh, there's gonna be some kind of penalty there. Civil citation seems like the most obvious thing to me. Treat it like open container, for goodness sake. Uh, I mean, the, you don't want people walking down the street getting high, but you do not want to ruin someone's life for it. I remember about, I guess it was probably 10 or 15 years ago, um, a student was taken into custody for some small amount of marijuana and ended up in, in really horrible situation at county jail to the point that, uh, his family was able to sue the county and cost the, the people of Olajwa County a whole lot of money because we put someone who was not a criminal in jail with people who were criminals. And that's ridiculous. When we, i-if we're gonna put people in jail for having a joint in their pocket, we're going to ruin lives. And the truth is that for, for me, and probably most of the folks in this room, it's an inconvenience. It's scary. It's something that you gotta hire a lawyer and spend a lot of money for. But for a whole lot of people in this community, uh, particularly in East Gainesville, it is a life ruiner. They don't have the money to go hire the good lawyer. So you're in the system and you will be in the system for the rest of your life because you got high. Civil citations are the way to go.
Thank you. Uh, our final question in this session, "How can the city commission help reduce Uber surges and diversify the marketplace by bringing Lyft to Gainesville?" I'll begin with...
Start with me. Oh, no, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Ward, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Ward, oh, good.
Um, it, it's really two questions. Um, how can the city commission help reduce Uber, Uber surges is perhaps separate than, than assuming that we do that by bringing Lyft in. Uh, I think competition is a good thing. If we want to bring Lyft in, that's fine. Um, we, we should seek them out and, and see if there's an opportunity there. But I think the better opportunity is to, uh, see what we can do with better public transportation so that neither are necessary. Uh, that, that seems like the, the most obvious thing to me. Now, is that inexpensive? No. It will require some serious budget planning. Um, you all know as students that we have a pretty good bus system for students. Our bus system for the entire rest of the community is not as good. But the good news is we have a gold standard to duplicate for the rest of the community. We need to find the funding for it and I, I, I think there are some ways to do that through negotiations with, for instance, UF and some other things, but that's not the point. Point is that the, the way to reduce Uber surges is by offering competition either through better public transportation or by bringing someone like Lyft in. Now, one of the issues that we have with that is that the city actually has a contract for, um, for helping older folks get rides inexpensively with Uber already. So that may be a conflict of interest of sorts if we go find Lyft. But when that contract's over, certainly we should approach competition for it.
Thank you. Eddy?
I think Uber's gonna kind of take care of itself as CEO keeps going the direction he's going in. But, um, in the meantime, yes, we have a contract for seniors, which has been really good with Uber. But Uber's business practices is really killing them themselves. They're killing... So I think competition's gonna come in. I think Lyft is gonna come in and we do need to renegotiate our contract. And we do have good grounds to renegotiate based on the behavior of the Uber company. Um, they were gonna go public. I don't know if they're gonna be able to now because their stock, uh, their, their whole commodity's dropping and I don't know how many of y'all saw what happened recently with the Uber CEO online. But that's gonna be, make a change. Uber's one thing. Lyft is another thing. Those are great, but I agree that we need to improve transportation. The bus service is great here, but we also need direct minibuses, is one of my ideas, to put down the main arteries in the city of Florida. With the, um, and I called them trolleys once before and people were like, you know, I meant, like you have a universal, um, drive down in, um, Orlando where you can jump on and off to go up the main, um, university, 34th Street, 13th Street, all those ways to help connect the bus system for everyone to make it work better. Also, we need a lot more walkability and that may mean overpasses and underpasses. And basically, that's expensive, but every light counts.
Thank you. At this point, we'll welcome questions from the audience. We have about 10 minutes for questions. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to expand on the bus situation because I work, um, up on Main Street and I have a bike and it's annoying to be there to be frank, uh, at either 2:00 AM or, uh, 7:00 AM. Um, and personally, I would love to have buses and I know that, you know, going on UF and around UF is great. The buses are wonderful. Um, can you, Mr. Ward, expand, um, on your ideas for getting buses and like either in congregation with UF or, um, in a different way to get, uh, the buses out farther into the community that connects more and more places?
Well, ideally, as, as we said, the, uh, what Gainesville does really well, what RTS does really well, um, with, uh, public transportation is move students from apartment complexes on Archer Road, et cetera, to this campus and to Santa Fe. Do a great job with that. We have a good template for it. So if we can roll that out into East Gainesville, into northeast Gainesville, into finally northwest Gainesville, which really northwest should be our... Uh, even though it's the, the district we're representing, the need is more east of here. Um, and out to places like the SWAG area and, and all that. We need to, to make sure that we can get people who can't afford cars or who just choose not to ride cars to, to work. There are jobs in Gainesville, but we need to help people get from where they are to where the jobs are. And if your job starts early in the morning, right now, you're just out of luck with the bus, really. Because it can take you a couple of hours to get from East Gainesville or mid-Gainesville out to Tower Road, as you'll probably hear about a little later this evening. Um, there are, there are better ways to do this. We know how to run a good bus system in Gainesville. We just need to have, we need to find the funds and create the political will to get that done for, for our citizens who aren't as fortunate as I am. I have a car. My wife has a car. We can afford gas. We can get where we need to go really quickly in this town. Not everybody is that fortunate and we need to recognize that and do whatever it takes. You know, a budget is a, uh, is a document that shows you where the community's priorities are. And our priorities are clearly, at this point in time, not in helping people get to work on, helping people who really need to help get to work on time. Um, I would like to see us move forward in a better direction with that. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Eddy, would you like to respond as well?
Uh, well, the, the thing is more than just, uh, having a car, not having a car. Because you may have a car, but parking on campus is like next to impossible. Or even at some different jobs, it's impossible. Um, I, my daughter, one of my daughters is a nurse at night. She works at Maridian. My other daughter, it works at Northwest Grill. She's a cook. Yes, one of the only female cooks there. Actually, she is the only female cook. Um, so parking and having transportation late at night is a big situation that we need to take care of and make it safe for everyone. And that's where, again, I think the minibuses, um, should be a priority. I'm on the Transportation Committee, RTS Committee. Right now, all the advertising money for RTS is going in poofliya. It's going back into the general budget. Nobody knows where it's going. I believe that we should be increasing our, um, selling advertising on the bus system at bus stops and make hotspots and everything else, have AT&amp;T sponsor hotspots. Let's get some money into the bus system so that we can finance late-night buses for people like you. And they need to be able to take a bike home, even if they are a minibus. And minibuses, a lot of people have said, now, there's the technologies there for electric minibuses. So there's a whole culture out there that we need to dip into and look at to make it safer for everyone and make transportation... Because one of the things that really bothers me is when RTS shuts down transportation the day after Thanksgiving. A lot of low-income working people get a job just to make it through the holidays and/or they, they're working extra hours. They get that second job and the biggest day is the day after Thanksgiving and they can't get to work because the bus system shuts down for the entire day. I think that's wrong. I don't think it should happen. I think we need to have some specific routes. Maybe not all the routes going because there wouldn't be enough, um, ridership, but we need to make sure we know where those people are, have them sign up. You can do a sign-up survey online, wear buses and then they can go and make it direct. We have online services that we are not, or online capabilities we are not utilizing and we need to start utilizing that to get people from point A to point B.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Yeah, go ahead.
So this is an election that very few people, young people and students in particular, know about and nonetheless have any enthusiasm for. What do you think, um, we can do to increase awareness and convince people of the importance of participating in local elections?
We'll begin with Eddy.
Me? Uh, one of the things is we have to build a bench locally. You don't suddenly, even though some people do, suddenly jump into a race. I guess if you're a billionaire, you can do that. Um, and start running for president or for state representative or for whatever. We need to build a bench locally. And until people get involved in the local elec... elections and build their bench, and that means young people, if you don't build the bench, then it's gonna be harder and harder. Because our state's been kind of taken over. Our federal government, in my opinion, has been, I don't even wanna go there. But we need to build the bench locally and it starts. Running for office is not easy. I, I'm, I'm gonna say that right now. I'm not gonna pretend it's easy. It's not fun. I'm gonna say that right now, I'm not gonna pretend it's easy, it's not fun. There's a lot of other things I could be doing. I am retired, my husband's retired, but I have five daughters, five young girls, and that is why I am running, because I cannot see this continuing. I want to build a path, a path for the future. But if we don't build locally, I'm not gonna jump into a state representative job or a position like that with no experience. We need to help build the local bench. So by telling students and telling young people, get involved now, get involved now, because who you're putting in office at the state and county level means what, I mean, excuse me, at the city and county level helps for the state and federal level. It's building the bench. So that's what we need to do, and that's how we need you involved, because we need to build our bench.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
I'm gonna try to answer your questions directly as possible. One of the things I believe we can do is move the elections away from March. March elections, nobody seems to have a good reason for why we do this. I have talked to people, former supervisors of election going way back, nobody has a really good reason for why we do this in March. I believe our local elections should be in August with the primaries, when the rest of it happens. If we need a runoff, then you do it in November at the general election every two years. Two things that does, first, it improves turnout right off the bat. We get about 12% to 15% turnout for city elections. Because, believe me, students are not engaged, but neither is most of the community, to be honest. That's not a good way to run a democratic system of government. We can involve more people by moving the elections, we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars a year by moving elections. We've looked at the way other cities do this, it is much more economical to have them at the same time as other elections, and other people, folks know that there's an election happening then, that's the first thing we can do. Second thing we can do is, we can do as candidates and as elected officials, a better job of coming to you and saying, these are the issues that we're working on. This is how the city commission affects your life. Please help us work on this, we need you. Gainesville's a university community, it's a company town, and this is the company. Without the University of Florida, we're Lake City, and I don't want to be Lake City. No offense to folks up in Columbia County, but I like it here. And this is the way it is because of the University of Florida. We need to work on engaging students. Now, that's not new, that's been that way for a long, long time. But we can do things like hold, not necessarily holding city commission meetings on campus, but we can certainly come to you as commissioners and talk to you about the things that are going on. We can schedule meetings here at the Graham Center. I know Dr. Colbert would love to have us here more often. Talking about the ways that local government affects your life and the way you can affect local government. If students ever got really involved in an election, you would swing the election, a local election, you absolutely would. You have tremendous power that isn't being used right now. And I would like to, maybe you would be on the side that I'm on, maybe you wouldn't, but I want you to be there because I think the more people who are involved in a democracy, the better that democracy is. There you go. I hope that helps.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
How would you finance the expansion of public transportation?
Mr. Ward?
One of the things that I would do is, and this goes back to the UF strategic plan, this is a good time for the city to negotiate with the university. The university is ready to be a part of, more ready to be a part of the community than any point in my life. I think it's a good time to go to Charlie Lane, for Mayor Poe to go to Charlie Lane and say, hey, let's talk about good ways for this to happen. Here's what the city needs to become the new American city, which is the kind of the goal of this strategic plan. Help us do this. UF, through a couple of different things in the last few weeks, has indicated that they're ready to deal on a few things like that. I think now's the time to do that. That's not the entire answer, but it is an answer. We need to do the same thing with Dr. Sasser out at Santa Fe, and we need to rethink the way we do our budget. Because again, it is, it's a statement of values and priorities, and our values and priorities right now are not reflected in helping folks who need the help get to where they need to be. I would start by renegotiating some things with UF and with Santa Fe, and I would take a good, strong look at the entire RTS budget and rebuild it from the ground up if necessary. It must be a priority. It's very expensive to build roads. Cars wear roads out a lot faster than people using transit systems wear roads out. So we need to think outside the box, this is a new century, things are changing fast, and if we don't take those opportunities, we're going to be really sad that we did not 10, 20 years down the road. So there's no great answer yet, but that's where I would start.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
I would start with partnering with businesses. I'm talking about real time right now. I think we need to partner with businesses, like I said earlier, AT&amp;T, Cox, hotspots, funding transportation through advertising. I do believe that we do also need to look at the future, and the strategic plan is wonderful, and we need to look, and one of the parts that's in it is the driverless cars, and that's all gonna be coming. We've got a great future ahead of us, and we need to keep working towards that future. But for the immediate future, what we need to do is, we need to expand our current system, which we have, which is buses, and we need to do that by getting partners to finance it, which was your question, is how do we finance it? I believe business partnerships.
Thank you. And that concludes this session, so thank you both very much for coming. Next, we will, yeah, let's turn around.
Is there a closing statement?
Yeah, you can take that. Few minutes for a closing statement. We apologize for the last minute changes.
No worries.
Yeah, we can move.
Okay. I believe that we all need to be, we need to work toward being a leading city in north central Florida, but I also believe to be a progressive city, we must be very inclusive. So we must make sure that as the university, as the, I think of Monsters, Inc., every time I hear this, this is the company, this is the community and company. Do any of y'all remember Monsters, Inc., or am I just like, alright, thank you, I got a nod there. Yes, that is the company, but we got, we cannot let those in the outlying areas not have any services. So we need to pull together and work as one community, one beautiful community that realizes everyone, everyone matters. And that's one thing I want to do on the commission. I want it to be representative of the community. Right now, I don't think it is representative of the community. We have pockets that are forgotten. The University of Florida is a strong force here, and it's a very powerful force, and I think we need to work together like we have been doing. And then when I worked with the Early Learning Coalition and with the Elatua County Children's Alliance and Child Abuse Protection Protection Team, I was also on the University of Florida Department of Pediatrics University Protection Team for Child Abuse, I mean, long, long title. We all came together as a community to make sure people all the way out in the rural areas were served. We need to do that with other services, and I'm really proud of what we've done with our hospitals and the children's hospital and how we've brought everyone together. What we need to do is keep expanding that togetherness.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Thank you once again for inviting us here. I'm sorry that we didn't have the full complement of candidates because frankly, I like to spar with Mr. Klossner, and I'm sorry that he's not here to present some ideas that I could push against a little bit. I have been working for a long time in this community, I want great things to happen here. My roots are here, and I hope that my family tree stays here for a long time. I love being on campus, it's fun to be here, and I'm glad that you guys think that it's important enough to come down. My campaign has been talking a lot about lowering internet costs, we've talked about moving the elections, we're talking about a lot about eliminating the city gender pay gap. It's important to me that every woman working for the city of Gainesville makes at least as much as her male counterparts doing the same work. We passed here in the county a thing called Wild Spaces Public Places, a sales tax this past November. There are 99 projects to be funded in the city limits with that over the next eight years, and we need someone who will keep a close eye on those projects and make sure we spend the money as taxpayers said they wanted it spent. I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club, by the Central Labor Council of North Central Florida, Gainesville Citizens for Active Transportation, Stonewall Democrats, UF College Democrats, and the Human Rights Council of North Central Florida. We've all been in front of all those folks and all those organizations, those grassroots, people-powered institutions chose to endorse me for this position. I would ask for your support as well. We have a lot to do in the next two weeks, and if you want to be a part of it, we'd like to make you a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give another round of applause. Next, we'll be calling up the candidate from District 3, Mr. Ariola. Once again, we'll begin with a brief introductory statement, about two minutes. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. My name is David Ariola, and I am running for District 3. I was born and raised here in Gainesville, actually. My parents came here in the 80s on student visas to go to UF, and this was a time when immigration was a more celebrated aspect of our country. They liked Gainesville so much, they decided to get their citizenship and raise a family here. So here I am, I went to U-Holz before I got my MBA, and now I'm a Director of Sales Operations and Marketing at 21st Century Communications. It's a company started by my friend who's a UF grad, and he wanted to headquarters his company here. It's a telecom company, we service 13 counties in the surrounding area, and this year we're looking to go statewide and leap nationally next year. So that's a good economic vision that we have here for Gainesville, we just have good job-producing headquarters here that can service the surrounding areas, and so I'm proud to run. And last year I was elected a delegate to represent our community at the Democratic National Convention. And so the reason I'm running for city commission is because Gainesville is changing a lot. In the last 25 years, we've seen a lot of growth, but it's mostly been on just one side of town. We need to reprioritize where we're putting our economic development, also go on the east side of town. And I also think that it's important that we work to keep some of what makes Gainesville special. The fact that we have a good historic tree canopy here makes us a little bit different from some of the other deserts that might be in South Florida. And I also think that we need to make sure that we're creating a more economically, more diverse economic professions here for people to move into and advance into. Because ultimately, as our population grows, we are going to grow out of just having, most of our jobs primarily focused around universities and the hospitals. So thank you so much for inviting me, and I've got some tough competition tonight.
Thank you. Well, I'll start off with our questions, you'll have 90 seconds to answer. Do you have any plans to improve broadband internet service in Gainesville?
Yes, so broadband internet does need to be expanded here in Gainesville. Company that I work with, we work in multiple markets, and I see what happens to internet pricing when there's only one major provider in town, and they have no incentive to expand their lines, and they keep on using these old copper lines which can't give you the type of broadband speeds that you can with fiber optic. So I support the city commission, actually Commissioner Adrian Heisantos, whose campaign I helped run last year, one of his main points was expanding broadband internet here in Gainesville through studying how we can use some of our existing fiber optic lines that are already there and use them for residential and commercial broadband access. This is all, that's okay. So I absolutely do support using some of our existing fiber lines, but the ultimate question is for the areas that don't have fiber lines, are we gonna expand? And if there's not competition, if we don't have multiple companies that can provide services, there's no incentive for Cox Communications to expand those lines. So we absolutely need to make sure that we're opening up competition and that we are investing in expanding those lines because it creates a digital divide in this city. And in areas in this city where you can't access broadband internet for children who are in school and have assignments, they're not gonna be able to complete those assignments, and that just widens the student success, the disparity in student success that we see in some of our schools.
Thank you. What is your position on the future of alternative energy in Gainesville, specifically forms other than biomass, such as solar?
Yeah, so my vision for GRU is that it should be a regional energy provider. There's no reason why the municipally-owned utility can't service more areas in the surrounding region, but we need to make sure that we're increasing our energy generation capacity. Right now, the main issue facing GRU is the fact that one of our coal-fired plants is about to be too old and I got to put it out of commission. So we're going to need to expand our energy portfolio. Solar energy is the most reasonable path right now because we just, we can't use hydro, wind, and biomass. We have one of the largest biomass plants in the country, but we don't own it, and we can go more in-depth into the biomass issue later. But solar seems to be the way to go. Federal funding is coming into Elatua County where we can help commercials and residential units outfit with more solar panels because it is still too expensive for the average income. Even though it's gotten cheaper over the years, it still is just outside of what I would say would be a middle, a middle-of-the-road incomes means. So I would definitely look into expanding solar here for GRU.
Thank you. What can the city do to entice students to stay and contribute to businesses in Gainesville after graduation?
So the city has an Office of Economic Development, and it is very understaffed. Last time I checked, there was just one person. So we need to invest more in this office because ultimately, there have been some really good pioneering projects, one of them from Santa Fe College, actually, the Center for Innovation and Economic Development downtown, where if you have an idea and you want to turn it into a business, you can meet with a professional who can tell you how you can take the steps to make that into a profit earning or to at least develop what a profit margin would even look like. And they have space there where you can use to have meetings and to use the technology. That's a great idea, and we need to continue to support ideas like that. Also, we need to make sure that we have affordable rent for spaces. One of my friends, he lives, or he doesn't live, his office is in the Innovation Square, and he just rents a single office space there on a month-to-month, but he works all around the state, sometimes he even goes internationally for media production. So these are the types of things we need to offer students, and I think ultimately, having more investment in the Office of Economic Development, we can help students who have an idea, who want to turn this into a business, to see how Gainesville can contribute to that vision and what markets already exist here for them to tap into so that you can start the business even while you're in college, and then when you graduate, you've already created your own job.
Thank you. So what is your view on the appropriate actions for nonviolent drug offenses? Specifically, a common one that affects students and low-income residents is civil citations for marijuana possession.
So I believe that we as a nation need to decriminalize marijuana. One of the disadvantages to having it illegal is that you can't do any scientific studies, so that's kind of left us with one hand tied behind our back. But this could be a potentially divisive issue for our community. A study recently came out that showed that in Elatua County, the number of incarcerated citizens who are not students and who are caught with marijuana is much higher, and I'm talking at least by 20 percentage points than students who are caught with marijuana. So keep in mind, this could be a very potentially divisive issue. So the only way that I would support civil citations is if we are emphatically enforcing that equitably to everyone, whether you're a student or not, because that is something that, you know, if, you know, if it's just one group of people that are being arrested, you know, that's a bad policy.
Thank you. Finally, many students we speak with have various complaints about parking in Gainesville. Do you have any plans to increase the availability of parking spots or change the city's parking pass system?
Yeah, so parking, it doesn't matter what city you go to, parking's gonna be an issue. There never seems to be enough. So I will say that I don't think constructing more 10-story parking garages is gonna be the solution. You know, for one, it's just hard to get funding for that. Who wants to donate money to put their name on a parking garage? Not a whole lot of people. So I think what we can do downtown is that we can create more parking on certain streets for diagonal parking that will create more spaces rather than just having parallel parking. So there are certain areas in downtown where we can maybe create that. But also for the decals, I do like the neighborhood zoning for the decals, but I would like for there to be an option for people to purchase a decal where if they don't necessarily live in that neighborhood, they can still park around the city if they're willing to pay for the decal. And I think that's something the city could implement. It's too bad my opponent's not here, I was gonna hit him for raising the Rome towing rate, which I'd like to put an end to.
Thank you. Now we have time for some questions from the audience, if anyone has questions for every candidate? No, okay, I have a few more. The Innovation District between downtown and campus is obviously a big interest. What do you envision the future of this area to be and how should it play into Gainesville's larger economic goals?
Yeah, so the Innovation District is a real gem, and with the signing of the Strategic Memorandum of Understanding, we're gonna see a lot more growth in that area. So I want to see some more mixed-use development, retail space, residential space, commercial space, and a wide variety of office space that can be rented by students or by really anyone who has an innovative idea that wants to start and they need a space to go there. But one of the things that we need to do for Gainesville is kind of, we've been known as, we have a lot of incubator areas, you've heard this phrase, incubators. Well, these companies, once they're done incubating, they need to have a city where they can accelerate their growth, because what happens is when they start hitting their $1 or $2 million valuations, they're gonna get offers from other cities. Now, we've got a good high quality of life here in Gainesville, and we definitely need to maintain that. And that's one of the reasons why we can keep companies here. And I think that by focusing on mixed-use development and really making these denser areas, making them more affordable, and then having alternative transportation and greater walkability and things, more companies like Sharp Screen open up larger spaces.
Any questions yet? Go ahead.
I know at the county level at least, I know Elatua County Sheriff's deputies, they have the discretion as to whether they want to issue a citation for somebody who has marijuana or arrest that person, and I think that's part of the problem. Do you think if the city came up with something, giving Gainesville police officers the discretion or a mandate, issue a citation?
Yeah, so for, it's difficult to mandate because the civil citation option itself is going against federal law. So, you know, and ultimately, it comes down to the sheriff, who is an independently-elected official, and GPD, you know, we can give them the option, but we can't necessarily mandate it. Now, I do think that by and large, Chief Tony Jones and Sheriff Darnell would like to save so much money on their budget and save space in the jails and space in the holding areas instead of arresting people. So I think it's a sensible policy, but the question is, you know, it's ultimately upon the discretion of the discretion of the officer, and really, that's our criminal justice system, the discretion of the officer, for it doesn't matter what law you're talking about.
Any other questions? All right, I'll ask one more. How can the city commission help reduce Uber surges and diversify the marketplace by bringing Lyft?
So glad you asked this. So the first thing we can do is we can put a cap on the surge multiplier, because right now, they have a formula for calculating the surge multiplier, and it can go five, six, seven, eight. If we just put a cap on it, and we have Uber put a cap on it, then you're going to see, I mean, you won't see surge rates get out of control, which I think is really the problem, because a one or two multiplier is not really that much, but when you start getting in the four, five, six range. Because, you know, the whole purpose why Uber puts this out there is so that the more drivers will become available, but sometimes that isn't always the case. The second thing we can do is to reduce the volatility of price fluctuations. We can make it so that these multipliers can't change every 30 seconds, because sometimes that does happen. So these are two things that can be done. I know that Uber thinks that, you know, they can rebrand the surge and explain what a surge is and all that, but that's just for their purposes, really, it doesn't really change the fact that you're going to be paying more. As far as bringing in Lyft, yeah, I support competition. Lyft is a good service in some cities and not in others, but, you know, in Gainesville, I think we've got good people, and I think it would be a great service there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? All right, if not, if you'd like to offer any closing remarks, we have about two minutes.
So if you look at District 3, you'll notice 62nd Boulevard, 20th Avenue, so I'm just going to say some of these apartment complexes. Lakewood Villas, The Woodlands, The Districts, Cabana Beach, West 20, all of those apartment complexes that are on, oh, I forget the name of the road, but right behind where Bento's is on Archer, that's all in my district. Now, in my district, you've got a turnout rate of about 11 to 15 percent, which comes out to about 3,500 voters. In those complexes themselves, you could probably double the turnout. But they vote at low levels. In the last election, I think it was under 100 people between the ages of 18 and 30 who voted in these city elections. So just in this room, you could increase young voting percentages by 20 or 30 percent. And a number of you have volunteered on my campaign, and we've gone out and tried talking to people who voted in last year's elections, because, you know, voting is a habit. And if you voted twice last year, you're probably more likely to vote this time around. So one of the reasons why I am so invested in this campaign is because we do need more participation in our city from young people, and particularly from students. Up until this point, the greatest student involvement has typically been on the campaigns. But the city has advisory boards that they have seats specifically set out for students. This is an area where you can get more involved, and if you are willing to spend two or three years of your time in Gainesville, I think that is the answer for getting people more involved. But ultimately, us candidates, we have to do a better job of reaching out. But when historically, the turnout is so low, sometimes it's difficult for candidates and for campaigns to allocate those resources. But it is incumbent upon both the students and both the candidates to work to increase turnout, and that's what my campaign is going to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Let's give a round of applause. And finally, we have the candidates for the at-large district, so that means all of you are eligible to vote in this. So welcome them. I'll begin with Ms. Powell.
Okay. My name is St. Powell, and I moved to Gainesville in 1989. That was the summer before 6th grade for me. I have had the pleasure of living other places, but, you know, Gainesville has always felt like home, so this is where I wanted to raise my children. Which, you know, I became a mom pretty young, I was 19. My daughter's 19 now, my oldest one. And life has always been, because of, you know, those choices, been a little bit more difficult. And over the last two years of volunteering on a few campaigns, I started the Bernie Sanders campaign here in Gainesville in May 2015, and I served as a delegate at the convention. And I started to realize that a lot of our focus is on national politics, when really we need to concentrate on our local politics. Most people, like David was saying, we have a very dismal turnout for city elections, because most people aren't paying attention to city elections. So I'm running because I feel that we need to have more involvement by the community. We need to have a higher turnout. I try not to focus my campaign on super voters, I'm trying to create super voters. You know, I've learned so much about city politics, and what I've learned is that it's not necessarily working for the people, and I think that we need to focus on representing more of our community. Right now, we have a lot of income inequality, and I think there's a lot of things that we can do on a city level that can change that, and we can change the lives of a lot of people in the process. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Ms. Warren?
Thank you very much, and thanks for organizing this event today. I was a student here at the University of Florida back in 1975 through '81, and for me to come up from St. Petersburg, this was a place where I really got to grow as, understanding who I was without having four brothers and a sister to be compared to. And the experience of being here during the '70s was during a period of time where there was a lot of social upheaval. That experience just really gave me the foundation for the studies that I went through with a lot of science as an undergraduate, but then finished up with sociology, and I got a master's degree in community ed, where I've gone out and I've worked with people since then in the community, trying to find connections to their place in any community. I was a support coordinator for individuals with disabilities in St. Petersburg. I managed a nutrition site for the elderly out of Phoenix, Arizona. And then I had an opportunity to come back to Gainesville in 2002. Since then, I have been involved in helping other people with their campaigns. I've been a president of an Audubon chapter locally here. I've been on their chapter for about 2002 to 2013, when I became a city commissioner the first term three years ago. The three years that I've been on as a city commissioner has given me an incredible experience to understand the complexity of what the city operations are, not just as a city municipality, but that we do have a utility company that we have responsibility for. And the big issue that was going on three years ago was over a divisive argument in the community about what to do about the biomass plant. I feel like the last three years, I've been helped bring partnerships together. We're reducing the utilities for the customers overall, and we've got a lot that we'll continue to work on to make it the best service for the people of Gainesville. And I'd love to have an opportunity to be your commissioner for another three years.
Thank you. We'll begin with the question session. What is your position on the future of alternative energy in Gainesville, specifically forms other than biomass, such as solar? Start with Ms. Warren.
Okay, well, as I was a student back in the '70s, it was really interesting, some of my friends who were in the engineering department were talking about this solar energy thing, and how cool it would be, and how perfect it is for Florida. Well, at that time, a lot of the utility companies were buying those patents and putting them in a shelf. Since then, in the last 10 years, we're seeing that the production of solar power has gotten low enough that we can do, it's more feasible, we can have people putting it on their roofs. So the conversation that I've been having with our general manager, the director of the utility company, is what is our exit plan? How are we going to get out of fossil fuels? Solar power, what we're seeing is the people who have the most money can afford to put solar panels on their roof, but that's not helping the people who are the lower income and having the hardest time to pay their utility bills. I can visualize, and I've been to a training workshop with the American Public Power Association, where they talked about solar panels in community places where people in the neighborhood were able to connect and make use of those lower rates. But until then, gas right now is looking like it's going to be our main fuel for the next 20 years. The technology that has been different, that, you know, if we think about what we had five years ago, we need to be open and have the flexibility to switch our power services and energy resources according to the new technology that we'll have available.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
I definitely, you know, like solar. We need to definitely be expanding our renewable resources, but we need to be really careful. This is a technology that is rapidly advancing, so we cannot, you know, get into lengthy contracts for renewable energy that could very well change in, you know, five years or even, you know, two years. So I was actually researching a little bit of this today. We've got some other, like, there's a company called Bloom Energy, and they're, you know, creating these big cells. And so we have to think about what we can do as a city, because if those start coming here, then, you know, we own our own utility, and that's a big, you know, source of our income. So if we have these big power batteries, I don't, it looks like a big giant battery to me, but if we have those coming here, that, you know, companies are starting to use those things, and that's cutting down on their bills. So, you know, solar, making solar more available, making solar more available to all people, not just, you know, wealthy people who can, you know, who can afford to put in the systems. But we definitely need to start turning away from fossil fuels, because, you know, our planet is suffering.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask, what is your position on allowing people above the age of 18 but younger than 21 to frequent establishments which serve alcohol at night? We'll begin with Ms. Powell.
Okay, I believe they've already tried this, and it was thrown out in court. So I would, I do not support reintroducing that. I believe that students need to eat, and they need to drink, and they cannot be bound by, you know, their, just because their age shouldn't keep them from being able to, you know, frequent an establishment. You know, and like I said, I believe this has already been done, and it already went to court of law, and it was already thrown out. So, you know, students have different schedules. I would never do anything that would prevent a student from being able to eat and drink, you know, that would go along with their schedule.
Ms. Warren?
This was an item that had come up when we had a committee structured with city government. I was on the public safety committee, and I've met with, the university's got the coalition of community and university faculty and staff that has been looking at the issue of underage drinking and basic alcohol abuse that happens at every grade level with, or age level with the university interest. And so let me just say that with the issue of underage drinking, what we recognize is that there are a lot of young people that want to get out and socialize, there's music venues, which in this community, music is one of the most valued activity for people to connect with something other than academics and sports. And so what the police department did is they looked at what other policies were in communities to allow establishments to let underage people in, and, you know, whether to go with a wristband. It puts the responsibility on the owner of the facility, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from the business owners that they feel like the current policy that the city is proposing is something that they think is fair, because they also are judged by the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms business, although they don't have any staff to keep up with the use, you know, violations that would happen. But I think that the city's going in the right direction. We've been business communities to say they like the policy, because it protects them too.
Thank you. What can the city do to entice students to stay and contribute to businesses in Gainesville after graduation? Start with Ms. Warren.
Okay, so as I mentioned, my background is in community ed, and I think one of the things that we can do is recognize opportunities for students to learn, to look at what problems are in a community that they can help find the solutions to. And what I've been looking at, the current academic path, as students going into the classroom and focus on the classroom learning, academic learning, they get, if they're successful, they get a degree, a high school diploma, and then they go on to college, and they continue the same focused academic policy. And then they get that master's degree or PhD, and it's like, good job, now go get involved in the community. Why can't we have an education system that engages students every year, every day, looking at problems in their community and helping find solutions to that? And there's evidence of, like, intercity communities where students are helping out with finding problems to their community, they can relate those issues with their math, their science, their public speaking skills, they can identify businesses that might help solve the community problems. So we've got that opportunity to, one point that I think would be really open and creative with the new strategic plan that the university is coming to look at. Other opportunities are looking at the, keeping the creative energy of the students here, but we need to find something for high school kids to be able to have a job if they don't make it in the academic world of the university. And it's a real complex thing, it's really hard to answer these in less than two hours.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Okay, a well-planned and managed city attracts, you know, business and entrepreneurial talents. We really need to be careful that we don't ignore the lower-income residents in the city, because the lower-income residents pull, you know, the wages, the wages are stagnant. So you're not going to have somebody graduate from UF and get a high-paying job here, because the, you know, starts off pretty low. I know people who graduated with a four-year accounting degree, and now they're working for the city, and they're only, they're making less than $15 an hour, four years of college, you know, less than $15 an hour, you know. So we really need to work on raising wages. We have all the assets, you know, the climate and, you know, recreation, we have everything to offer, but we just need to start balancing, balancing our workers. We need to, you know, people coming out of high school need to be able to get educated, whether they go to college or not. They need, you know, we always have to have plumbers and electricians, so I've been endorsed by the North Central Florida Central Labor Council, and we've talked a lot about expanding apprenticeship programs, and basically just making sure that our youth is not, you know, committing crimes, and they're actually, you know, they can have a good life in there.
Thank you. Recently, there have been several incidents involving pedestrian safety near UF campus. What can the city commission do to improve pedestrian safety and walkability or bikeability of Gainesville? Start with Ms. Powell.
Really, the plain answer is we need a radical plan to get students to the university. I say, like, probably about two miles. It would be fantastic if we could have, you know, alternative transportation to get students to and from the university. Right now, you know, we have our city buses, but we also have our city buses, and we have a lot of cars. And, you know, one of the other questions is, you know, student parking. You know, we have too many vehicles, now we have 10-story parking garages, you know, right on some of the busiest intersections. So I would love to see, you know, some radical change, and, you know, maybe bring in, you know, have a alternative form of transportation that could get us around, you know, this area to relieve some of that congestion.
Ms. Warren?
This is one of the big areas of, what we're looking at with just traffic in general and the amount of accidents that happen and cyclists, I mean, how do you get students, how do you get people to pay more attention and to be mindful when they're in a car or when they're walking or driving? And, you know, if we can get people to think that when they're driving, you know, consider who it is that's next to them, it could be somebody's daughter, somebody's child. The mayor's putting out a Vision Zero plan, where we're looking at being able to reduce some of those fatalities, you know, get down to a zero thing. But I think that one of the key is, is to look at what we do during football games. When we have these high activities where a lot of pedestrians are out, we close the city, you know, University Avenue down. And I think that as we plan for the future and recognize how these areas where high student densities and pedestrians are going to be, we need to slow the traffic down in those areas too, and have opportunities for traffic to get across the city to their destination on the other side. Do things like 8th Avenue and 16th Avenue and Archer Road and Wilson Road, be more the venue for that. But we need to slow down the traffic, like what we've done on Main Street. As we see the traffic has slowed down around Main Street, we see more people getting out and using the businesses that are available for them there. So that's going to be a big thing. Talk about crosswalks, getting over the city streets. We have to remember that University Avenue is a state-owned road, and we have to work with the DOT to do any designs there.
Thank you. Finally, this question regards the Innovation District between downtown and campus. What do you envision the future of this area to be, and how should it play into Gainesville's larger economic goals? We'll start with Ms. Warren.
Okay. I think that's one of the things that, again, I think the town-and-gown partnership with the university is going to be crucial, because other communities where you have these same dynamics with the university or businesses that are growing, we end up removing the people that have been part of the city. the people that have been part of the historical communities. Um, if we can get students in urban design and economic development, identify ways to find a balance to keep those historical communities in place while we provide growth and new developments, new buildings that come in, um, those skills, they'll be, those students will be able to take anywhere, plus we'll be able to see that Gainesville was an actual, uh, facility that got that lesson, you know, the cutting-edge experience of what to do. Um, previously, uh, Harvey Ward mentioned the opportunity to be able to look at Land's Crust and to preserve the historic housing. We've got a CRA, a Community Redevelopment Agency, that's been doing a lot of restoration and, and redevelopment of old neighborhoods. We had an opening of, uh, A. Quinn Jones Museum just this last Sunday that is part of the preservation of the historical community. And we've got the Quarters Community, which actually was a place where people who were the Quarters on the trains lived near the Depot Park, uh, a different park than what we're seeing today, but that was a big part of the historical character of this town and we need to be able to find those solutions together.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Uh, really honestly, um, Gainesville's larger economic goals, I'm not completely aware of what those are because they haven't really been shared with the public. Um, I support UF's plan, um, and I, but not at the expense of our historic neighborhoods. Um, I feel that, you know, I, I lived in Richmond, Virginia and I worked for a guy who was running for city council there and, uh, we were trying to preserve the community in, you know, a lower-income area that had been, uh, begun to bottom and, you know, little by little, the residents were being forced out, you know, they could no longer afford that. So I think that, you know, what we're doing right now, um, is okay, but we really have to make sure that we are really careful with our planning because, you know, we cannot, um, you know, we cannot destroy affordability and we cannot destroy the historic aspects of, of our city. Um, you know, slowly, our city's changing and, you know, we're going to have growth. We're, you know, we're going to have development, but I wanted to make sure that it considers all, uh, all of the citizens and, you know, not just UF.
Thank you. Uh, now we have about ten minutes for questions from the audience. Anyone, any question they'd like to ask? Yeah, go ahead.
Would you incentivize alternative sources of energy and if so, how?
Uh, couldn't hear the first part of that?
Would you incentivize alternative sources of energy and if so, how?
Okay, so.
Yeah, go.
Um, when you talk about, um, incentivize alternative sources of energy, I mean, that's where we were talking earlier about how the technology, we don't know what's coming around the corner, but that's where I'm saying that for GRU as a utility company, we need to be able to be in a position that we can shift and go with that new technology as it comes up. Um, some of the realities of what we're looking at now is what to do with interband, broadband, um, cable services for people to be able to access the internet. We've got a lot of people who are in areas where they don't have, they can't afford the cable internet and you can't go through public schools anymore without having the connection to the internet to be able to succeed with your academic development. So where there's that and, and as Jen mentioned earlier, you've got a lot of these other type of technologies. You can change water into different abilities to create energy. We can do things that, there was Tesla, I saw a program about Tesla, um, back in the early nineteen hundreds. He was talking about wireless electric connections. I mean, that guy was just brilliant. How did we connect to that? You know, still finding those, um, the discoveries and to put them into practical use is what we need. But yes, let me go back to your question. Yes, I would want to see that we can, um, make use of the advancement in technology, especially with the university here that's doing so much in every department to, to bring technology to, to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Okay, um, as far as incentivizing renewable, renewable, uh, energy, um, we need to be careful that we don't, you know, sign up for something that's going to end up costing us a lot of money in the long run. Uh, you know, we incentivize the solar, um, you know, like, uh, solar programs in the past and, you know, we're writing checks to, you know, not necessarily the people who are most needy, you know, who most needed them in the community, but we were, you know, writing big checks over long periods of time over, with something that, you know, is rapidly changing. So, um, I think we need to be careful, um, how we incentivize and for how long and really it's, it's something that we do want to encourage people to do things, but we also need to, uh, make these things available to all people. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm for, you know, some incentives, but they have to be done the right way.
Thank you. Yep.
So the intersection of University and Thirteenth is about to get much worse and it already is if that's possible. And, um, so how do we balance this development and growth while also being cognizant of the already strained, uh, traffic needs that may some places?
Ms. Powell?
Um, you know, there's, what I hear from everybody, you know, everywhere I go is, you know, they hate that building. You know, they, they hate that it's there and, you know, we, we were already sitting through, you know, three light cycles sometimes to get through that. So, um, when that parking garage opens, when that opens, it's going to get a lot worse. Uh, we're going to have to get creative. Um, we're going to have to get creative and possibly, you know, change the traffic patterns, uh, you know, right sizing roads. Um, I don't know, it's going to put a lot of strain on the other roads, you know, because, you know, during most of the construction, I didn't, I avoided it. I completely avoided, you know, Thirteenth and University, but you guys can't, you have no choice. So like I had mentioned before, um, you know, some really, some, you know, real radical changes where maybe we can, um, have some alternative, uh, you know, forms of transportation to get, um, around this area and, um, you know, even the, you know, skywalks or, you know, underground walks, uh, you know, there's, there's different solutions, but mainly, we need to make sure this doesn't happen again. Um, and we need to make sure that we have, uh, you know, the best advisory boards, the best planning, um, because some really lousy decisions have been made in the past and, you know, that's part of why I'm running because I, I've seen how the process is and how these things come about and I've been trying to educate, uh, citizens on how to prevent, uh, this type of development. Because, you know, we need development, we are growing, but we have to make sure that we are as responsible as possible, uh, while we're doing it.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Yeah, so we've talked a lot already about how technology is just around the corner. We don't know what it's going to be providing for, um, transportation practices. So I think that the consideration, again, what I've mentioned earlier, is to recognize that as we have more pedestrian traffic, we need to slow down the cars and the consideration already of what's been going up and down, um, Thirteenth Street and University Avenue, I, I would say we need to have auxiliary traffic, um, routes where the cars are going that's further away from the campus, but then we need to have RTS, Public Transportation Services, available for more shuttles north and south around campus so that people can get to the grocery store, get to their classes. We already have a great transportation system here on campus, but you need to connect to the other parts of the hub and where other people are living for workers who live, work on campus and live off campus or for students who live off campus and work and come to campus for the classes. Um, I think that, so the main thing is being available for the technology to be able to change and then have these other routes. Um, we've, we talked about having the crosswalks. Um, I, I just, you know, to think about the automo, the auto, autogynous, the, the cars that are going to be auto, you know, driving on the, their own, like the hover bicycles or stuff. I, I just think it's going to be incredible to see what's going to be available for that. But we do have the opportunity for more electric, small vehicles. I saw an electric cart just this afternoon going up campus, um, providing shuttles. Uh, it's like a six-seater and it's the first time I'd seen that, but that would be ideal to have more of those operating. We just need, I, you know, a lot of people don't like to hear us talking about getting cars away from areas where they're trying to get to their destination, but I'm hearing that as a community becomes more walkable, some of the apartment complexes here have a lot of students who don't have cars anyway. And the university's talking about bringing more students, the first two-year students on campus. So there's going to be some shifts that happen, but that's part of the conversation that will certainly be part of that university, Florida and the city, town and gown relationship to make sure that we're, we're planning it. So it's a win-win for everybody. Why I'd like to be able to hang around is because we already started that conversation and I'd like to see how it's going to go for the next three years and be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. Any last questions? Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I think, uh, Ms. Powell brought it up earlier, I'm not, I think one of you did, about the, uh, the low wages for city workers. I know the city commission can't control, uh, city wages, they don't have control of minimum wage, but, um, what do both of you think would be an appropriate minimum range for the city, uh, for city workers? Because that becomes another, that's a lot of people, that's policemen, that is, sanitation workers, uh, and people who do errand work in the city. So what's an appropriate minimum range for the city to have these people?
Ms. White?
Yeah, um, fifteen dollars an hour is, is not really going to cut it for a lot of people, but that's basically what our goal is. We're, our conversations are looking at being able to get fifteen dollars an hour as a minimum. And that was a big part of my discussion, that I got a lot of targets from the labor coalition because I wanted to look at a, 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 a fee schedule that would get everybody, there's like five hundred people under fifteen dollars an hour, to get them closer to fifteen and some of them would actually move over the fifteen. Um, what we can do with the consideration is other things to the salary too. Over at Shands, I hadn't realized it, but I, my understanding is, is that Shands provides transportation for people, the workers, um, in different areas of the city so that they're not having to catch RTS bus, but they're catching the direct route from different points outside the city or at points of the city away from campus to bring them to work. And those kind of things, like daycare. What are the other things that we can do to add to the quality of life? Fifteen dollars an hour is what we're looking at currently to go back again for the third time to what we're looking at for a minimum. But then we also want to look at our healthcare package. We want to make sure people are going to be covered. The other things we could look at are things like daycare. Um, it, it, that's all, I'm kind of, that, that's, that's a full package. What we want, when you talk about the police department, most of those, um, our professionals are earning well over twenty dollars an hour. But what we want to do is make sure that their rate, their pay salary is competitive because if another community will pay their firefighters more than our community, then we end up losing them. We're stuck with having to do training to get people back up and we don't have the full force on, um, on their shifts to handle the calls that are there. So, um, when we talk about what's a minimum wage, we're talking about an important group of people, but as a city commissioner, I have to look at everybody that's working for the city and making sure everybody's getting the salary that they need to keep them there to respect the training that they've got and the services that they provide. I am going to work hard for that fifteen. Uh, there, there's nobody else on the commission that's going to be more passionate about that. But I did get endorsed by the firefighters' union. Um, I've got a list of groups that I got endorsed by, but I will say that the firefighters did endorse me because they've seen me fight for them for the last three years and I want to be there for another three years to get them the services and training that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Um, you know, the city workers, we've got the, the, you know, their minimum is twelve twenty-five right now and that is well below a living wage for Gainesville. Um, I actually did a, a little poll on my, um, Facebook a couple of years ago and I was trying to figure out if I was just not very good at budgeting my own money. So I kind of did a poll and asked, uh, you know, my friends, like, okay, what, what are you guys paying for rent? What are you paying for utilities? And just wondering if I fell in line, you know, with everyone else. And it seemed that, yeah, you know, we were all, you know, spending about equivalent same. Now, A, our house, housing costs went up if we had children, you know, our electric bills went up if we had kids. But, um, it kind of turned out, uh, it seemed that you needed about twenty, twenty dollars to like really live, um, you know, a, a, a good life, uh, where you didn't have to stress out, you know, that, you know, anything, any little mishap could, um, completely destroy your life. And, and right now, you know, there was an article in the, the Gainesville Sun, um, I think it was on Friday, that mentioned, um, that most, that nearly half of the families in Gainesville are, you know, one, one incident away from, you know, complete despair. You know, if they got into a car accident or, you know, a family member passed away, you know, then they could potentially be homeless. And, you know, that's a serious issue. So it's really good that we are taking the steps, um, as a city to, um, get high, you know, get up to, you know, we're at twelve twenty-five now and, you know, the goal is to get higher than that, but we also really have to, uh, you know, think about that when, when bringing businesses to Gainesville, uh, when approving businesses in Gainesville, we need to make sure that they're paying, um, wages that aren't going to be detrimental to the community as a whole. Uh, you know, we have, you know, huge corporations that are paying poverty wages and not giving back to the community. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that the city of Gainesville is moving in that direction, but, you know, we are at some point going to have to, um, you know, go community-wide and, and really, you know, we, we should start with the corporations that can absolutely afford it. Uh, you know, if they're going to do business in our city, then we need to make sure that they're paying wages that do not, uh, contribute to every one of their employees being on public assistance because that's the only way to survive. So I think that's really important that, um, you know, we, we keep up that conversation.
Thank you. And that concludes our question section. The candidates now have, uh, about two minutes to, uh, add any closing remarks. Start with Ms. Powell.
Okay, um, you know, I'm, I'm real new to this. Uh, you know, I've, I never thought in a million years that I would be running for office. Um, you know, I, you know, for most of, you know, my life here, you know, I was too busy to, you know, trying to survive, uh, too busy, you know, trying to raise a family that I wasn't really paying that much attention to what was going on in our local government. Um, my kids are getting, you know, to the age where they, you know, we're kind of counting down the days till they, you know, were off to college and out of the house. And then my, uh, daughter came along and, uh, she's two and a half now and I, kind of woke me up. It woke me up to the fact that if we don't do something now, um, there might not be much of a world left for, for her and, you know, for a lot of people. So, um, you know, they, I say, I've got a, uh, my Facebook cover photo says, you know, I always wondered why somebody didn't do something about that and then I realized I am somebody. So, um, I, I think I have a vision for Gainesville. I've got a unique perspective, um, that, you know, I, I know what it's like to try to survive in the city. I know how resourceful you have to be. I know all the hoops you have to jump through and the, you know, the red tape you got to cut through and, you know, it seems like in America, whoever fills out the, most paperwork, you know, correctly is the ones who gets, you know, get ahead. So I just, I would like to make some of the programs that we have more available, um, to all of our citizens. Uh, I want, uh, you know, us to have an open government, um, you know, no secret, uh, deals, um, everything should be in the open, it should all be in the sunshine. And, um, you know, I, I feel that the more people that I talk to, um, you know, over the past two years, I've met countless people and they don't feel like they're being represented right now. And, uh, I plan on being a voice for all of those people. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren?
Thank you very much, Haley. And thank you for putting this together again. Um, so, yeah, I hadn't run for office before, but I had been involved in helping other people get involved. I, as a member of the Audubon community, I had often gone to public hearings and made comments regarding one environmental issue over another. Um, so when there became an opportunity for me to step forward, to put my hat in the ring, so to say, um, I did so with the, the conversations with others who have been involved in the city government here in Gainesville. And I, one of the things I think that should be recognized is that Gainesville has had progressive leadership. Because of the term limits, every six years, there's a turnover and it's kind of like passing the baton on to another, um, member of your team to keep us going in a way that we are respected for being the intelligent, progressive, environmentally, tree-friendly community that's good for businesses, great for students. Um, and, and one of the things that that is evident in is the number of things that this city has been recognized as being the best in the nation for a place for older people, for the cost of living, for the parks, um, for city government. So we are recognized for being outstanding on many different categories by many different organizations. My interest in running for the city is to help get that leadership to keep us ready for the future so that we grow in a way that we can handle the increased population, but maintain a protection of those things that have made Gainesville so great, why it's a green ta- city and make sure that we protect the tree mitigation funds that we've got and that we design the traffic to handle the growth and the changes in transportation needs that will come up. I have said this often and it's one of my favorite lines, I've been here for three years as your city commissioner, it's like I've gotten a bachelor's degree, I'd like to have the opportunity to go on for another three and get a master's degree and serve the people of Gainesville to the best of, of my ability and, and I'm just very excited to have another opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you all for coming. Also, um, if you haven't seen yet, we did create a publication about the upcoming elections that's in the back. It's called Let's Talk Gainesville, so I really recommend checking it out. And thank you again.
Thank you, Haley.
Thank you.